Discussion tonight, the first is a joint lodging tax advisory committee meeting. And understand we have our deputy city manager, Ms. Kraus, who will lead us through this as well as Linda Smith and perhaps other members of the committee who might join us virtually. So Ms. Kraus, I think the floor is yours.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. So we are here for the joint lodging tax committee meeting. We have, we have several members here. I believe we have Phil Rashkey, who is virtual. We have Linda Smith here in person and we have Shaleen Potmanbird, also virtual. She's not signed on yet. I was just going to go and provide a overview of the lodging tax revenues and the process. So as you know, the city receives seven percent in lodging tax revenues. We have four percent which can be used for tourism promotion. That is the one pot that is more flexible. We also have the three percent which is restricted to capital or acquisitions. We're getting ready to start the 2023 grant application process, and this is on page four of your packet. We'll start with opening up the application period on August 1st, followed by tentatively scheduled for September 22nd to listen to the presentations and make the funding recommendations to the city council. It is expected to move forward to the city council for consideration on November 14th, followed by adoption on November 22nd. So the news is how much money will we have available for the 2023 grants? And right now, based on 2022 estimates, we're looking at 2,749,000 that's available. But right off the top, we take off that commitment for the McGavick Center. So that leaves about $2.65 million. Of that 2.65, it's almost equal the amount that can be used for restricted versus the flexible. But keep in mind that the portion that is flexible can also be used for the restricted, but it just can't go the other way. And also keep in mind that by state law, once the lodging tax committee makes the recommendations, the city council can choose only the recipients from the listed candidates, can applications and go with the amount that they've recommended. If the city council wants to do something different, it has to go back to the lodging tax committee for consideration. And that would need to occur 45 days before final action is taken by the city council. So that concludes my presentation.
Absolutely, Mr. Boki.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You, you mentioned how much would be available, but there's two pots of money. And you also mentioned that, thank you. But do, have we ever established a fund balance goal in that fund?
We at one time had a fund balance goal, but then that all went away.
So we got rid of it, but okay. So if we had an idea, and, and I don't have any off the top of my head, of a, a major capital commitment, shall we say, we would have to forward that to the body, to the, to the LTAC committee to
Yes, it would still need to be considered by the lodging tax committee.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Randstadter.
At the end of last year, Mr. Viewer made a presentation to us, and it had to do with the, the short-term lodging Airbnb-type businesses in the city. And they suspicioned that there were quite a few, but that the vast majority of them were had not gotten business licenses and thus weren't paying any taxes, including this one. And he was going to try to initiate some sort of efforts because our business licensing had shifted to where it was all being processed by the state. But how is that going? And to what extent do businesses like that contribute to LTAC-related revenues?
You know, I can't answer that question without seeing what businesses have not licensed, but there is a way for us to reconcile back to what businesses have been licensed through the state versus what we would have expected had they licensed with us. What we wouldn't necessarily capture is new businesses that are now Airbnbs. That's something that I'll follow up with Assistant City Manager Viewer.
Yeah, Mr. Viewer, when he was talking to us about that sometime, indicated that Lakewood was not alone in licensure avoidance by folks who were engaged in, in that. But that it, to the extent that every dollar counts, it would be interesting to know that we're actually engaged with the state in trying to follow through on that.
Yeah, and even with that, it is self-reporting. So, you know, it has to meet a certain number of days to qualify for the lodging tax. So it's not quite as easy as just saying, hey, these businesses, these are Airbnbs, we know about them. But we'd have to look at their financials too, to determine if they meet the criteria for reporting.
Okay, thank you.
So I have a couple of questions. So looking at page, looks like six of our packet, which is the spreadsheet of lodging tax grant award history. As I review it, there has been effectively one capital payment that we've made, and that's been the McGavick Center obligation, which ends in 2027, right?
Right.
So that is the only capital payment we're currently making, and it looks like from history.
But we also have capital projects. So we've made some contributions to parks projects. And I probably didn't
The pavilion, I guess, is up there. I see that in 17 and 18, and the gateway improvements. So those are capital, that's right.
Yes, yes. And I'm sorry, I, I don't know if I heard you correctly. My ears are a little bit plugged. On the McGavick Center, it is a 20-year debt service that started in 2007, so 2027.
Right, yeah, I think we're done in 2027. So, you know, one of the things, just talking out loud here, because it really is the committee, and we'll talk to Ms. Smith in a minute, that makes a recommendation, but it would be nice if we're going to do something to get it done. You know, I'm thinking out loud a little bit about Partners for Parks. I know we talked about the city having some sort of contribution in that at some point, at some level, based on the committee's recommendation. But, you know, it would be wonderful to not just, you know, waterboard this thing for 20 years. It's just like, let's get it done, potentially. I don't know, have you heard, Linda, about other possible capital projects that are floating out there that the committee might review? I know the applications will come in and we'll review them, but from your perspective
I have not heard of any capital project proposals or, or suggestions at this point, so.
Mayor, if I could, if you remember the H-bar construction, that is a project that we were thinking about for lodging tax allocation. So when the McGavick Center debt service expires, then the possibility of doing a similar thing for the H-bar.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, but it looks as if the numbers reflect that we don't have to wait until 2027 if the committee were to make a recommendation, because there, there is plenty of money on the capital side that one could do something in addition to.
Yes, it's based on whatever application. So if there's an interest, you know, that would be something that the city would apply for and have consideration by the committee and then to the city council for consideration.
So do we know if the city's going to make that application for that project this August?
I will put it on my note to revisit that. For the H-barn specifically, right?
Yeah, because I think we want to get this stuff done. If we're going to do it, we've committed to it. We've spent the study money. You know, we've told them, we've given them a thumbs up, we've given them two thumbs up.
And there probably needs to have a, I probably would need to talk to the city manager, because really it is a city council policy. At one point, when I presented it, there was a, there was some discussion about, you know, are we going to make them come in with the money before we start? And so that's more of a policy decision. Before we move forward with construction without the
It's a financial decision, maybe. The policy decision would be ours.
Yes, of course, the policy decision with the city council.
Mr. Randstadter.
Yeah, yeah, I think where we were at with that is that we've made decisions to move forward to the point of assisting Partners for Parks with identifying their, in building their capability to raise the non-public dollars. And we're waiting on next step is waiting on them to come back and say, they do have, they, they feel they do have the capability to start that, that project, in which case we can also then begin contributing to things like design and whatever, because at that point, it'll be, we can have confidence in moving forward that we're not going to end up being the exclusive funder.
Right, and if we're looking on that one, three and a half million of private money, it sounds like from the rough conversations we had.
Yeah, off the top of my head, I don't remember all the numbers, but I do remember potentially going through the lodging, well, planting the seed, first of all, and then potentially going to the lodging tax, submitting the application in like 25. But again, it's city councils, you know, direction and how we want to proceed. If you want to proceed sooner with the application and the whole process and not sticking to what we had put in the staff memo for securing the donations and the fundraisers and such.
It's worth looking at. I just, I mean, government moves at a glacial speed as it is. It might be kind of nice to actually enhance the opportunity to get something done in our lifetime on this one.
But yes, I will follow that one.
Yep, that'd be great. Any thoughts from the committee? And I don't know if Mr. Rashkey's on board there, on Zoom, I should say, or the other committee members, Ms. Smith? You know, I'm waiting. I don't know if I see them.
Mr. Rashkey isn't on by phone. I believe if he would like to unmute himself, he should use the star six function.
I'm just opening up, because I never want to leave you in the dark, Mr. Rashkey, although we're in the dark from where you are. But I want to give you the chance to say hello. But while he's clicking in, I just want to say I look forward to working with you and the committee this year, Ms. Smith and the, the other partners on the committee. I think it's going to be a robust discussion. I think there's a lot of opportunity for good applications. I've heard the community somewhat excited about the opportunity to not only get some good operational funding now that we're out of, out of the last bit of COVID, you know, for some of these organizations that do good work in the community and enhance tourism-related activity. But there are some capital needs and opportunities, including the H-barn project. And I know, you know, I'll have to recuse myself on the Lakewood Garden piece, but they will come in for a capital ask or completely rebuilding the, the client services, the carriage house in the barn there, not the barn, but the carriage house, which is going to have an educational component to it and a welcome center and the whole thing. And you'll hear more about that. But those are great opportunities for Lakewood in general to move the ball forward and make a name for ourselves, to bring in tourism-related participants and certainly resources. So more to follow on that. But it's exciting, you know, to be able to have some capability to do something of significance. Yes.
So Mayor, I do want to recognize that Jarnell Singh from Comfort Inn Suites, he's part of the lodging tax committee, he's in the audience.
Come on down, Jarnell, if you'd like, introduce yourself. And thank you very much for coming tonight. Thank you very much, well, welcome. We're just talking a little bit about the, the process, the procedure, and the monies that are available. And before I let Mr. Randstadter ask a question, do you have anything you want to impart some wisdom from your perspective as a payer of the lodging tax? Mr. Randstadter.
Yeah, I did have, just trying to get the dates straight in my mind regarding the McGavick Center contribution. The agreement was, it was in 2007 for 20 years of contributions. Is the last contribution in 2026 or the last contribution in 2027?
Okay. That's a very good question. I believe it's in 2027, but please don't hold me to that. It's going to be either 26 or 27, if you count it that way. I'd have to go back into my notes.
Okay. Yeah, yeah. One reason I ask is that we were looking at 2026, 2027 being a key date in the investment in the H-barn, and that would impact availability of capital dollars, particularly if we decide to do something that is more in terms of, issuing some bonds to do the H-bond project and paying it off over time, where we'd have a similar amount of dollars available to, 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 to spend rather than having to spend a one big chunk all at once.
And with the debt service payment, if the city council were to choose to issue bonds to support that, we have ways that we can structure the debt service. So whether it be 26, 27, or 28, there are ways to structure that.
Okay, yeah, I, I just wasn't quite sure where we're at the date, and I appreciate the clarification. And then the 30 years, then our 30 years of usage is also through either 2036 or 2037?
That I don't have
Or, or is it, or is it 30 years from the date of the completion of the construction, which was a different date altogether?
It's for a 30-year period for the use of the facility, but the debt service is based on 20 years.
Yeah, it's just that the 30 years start when the construction was completed, which is different than when, when the money started to have to be paid or billed it, probably when it opened, I would assume.
Yeah, I'm going to interpret it as when the city made the contribution for the debt service, then that's when we made the start of it for 30 years.
Okay, thank you. Well, we can certainly confirm that. And the reason why it's material is because the monies go to the Art Fund. Remember, we dedicated those monies from the city days, which has been a real good thing to do. Mr. Boki.
So, and, and this is just a general question for everybody. Keep in mind that as, as we, we're now 15 years into the McGavick Center. At what point is there a need for capital expenditures to kind of refresh it? And will we be part of that, I guess, is the, is the question. So, and I don't know if the Clover Park is, is thinking about that. I do, I do want to revisit the, the capital item because the city towards capital, capital improvements in parks and streets especially, but also things, you know, a, a lot of different things. And the Colonial Center, which is now kind of rounding into its own. So I think we do need to try to line up and, and at least help the committee on, here are some capital items that would be eligible for LTAC that we're interested in. I, we've talked about two tonight, and those would be the first two items that I would think of. But there, there may be other items. We also might eventually want to kind of start attaching some dollars to those so we can talk about, do we just lend, do we sell bonds? Or do we just lend ourselves internally money out of some fund and then pay ourselves back out of this fund and various things like that? I, I would note, and I wasn't here when it occurred, but when the commitment to the McGavick Center was made for $100,000 a year, that was well in excess of 15% or more of what we were bringing in in LTAC. I mean, I think I went back one time and LTAC was in the neighborhood of half a million dollars or something. And the council made a 20-year commitment for $100,000, which is a significant number. We're now in a good year, up above a million, and hopefully we'll be above a million. And so we really do have an opportunity to start to, to leverage the investment that the private sector has made in new hotels and motels with, with, and leverage the dollars that have been produced in that to try to leverage it even more tourism dollars, heads and beds, as they say. So I think it's important that we play a role in that and kind of understand how the fundraising is going in some of those projects, because clearly the two that we talked about, the private fundraising, is going to be a much bigger part than the public side, I think, in both those cases, so.
Definitely is going to be much bigger in the public side. But it's interesting, when you get into these campaigns, having some public support really enhances the private money, because then they think it's legit, it's going to happen, right? And it really rounds out the project appropriately. Mr. Singh, can you give us a flavor of, of some of the, the occupancy swings that you've seen? And what kinds of activities in the region cause your hotel beds to, to be more utilized? Press the little button there. The thing is, there are people listening.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, it's, it's upward, it's increasing. ADR is increasing as well. So it's a, everything upward, occupancy and ADR. So the sales are going up this year, and we hoping this trend will carry on.
And there are some events that are happening at places like Fort Silicon Park, like there's a, a large cross-country meet coming up this year, and there's a scouting jamboree that's going to happen. So those things bring in hundreds of people and potential visitors to your hotel. So it's a good symbiotic thing we're working on together.
Sure, sure. And what's the timing on those meetings, you said?
The jamboree, scouting jamboree, a lot of them will be camping there, so they won't necessarily be, but maybe some parents will be. That, I think, is in August. And then I, the cross-country meet, September typically. Yeah, it's huge. Lots of families come. It's a regional, probably one of the largest regional events that we have out there, so. Good stuff. Yeah, all right. Ms. Smith, anything else for the good of the order? I think Mr. Rashkey made an appearance by phone. I saw something crackle up there.
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Can. Did you have anything for the good of the order, Phil? Did you want to impart from your years of
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only thing I've heard about in terms of the, the capital expenditures was the H-barn. Nothing else has crossed my, my path. I would like to mention that my absence, I'm actually here in Tacoma, and I just finished to, you have to pay an admission to the International Space Station exhibit that's in the armory down here, which is a large venue. But if you haven't seen that exhibit, it is absolutely beyond belief. And I, I was just blown away by the technology in that exhibit.
That's great. Well, good report on that, that's fabulous.
Yes.
With some cool stuff like that in the H-barn project, because there is some movement to do something, you know, techno-savvy in there from a cultural standpoint, yeah.
Sure, it would have even fit in the McGavick Center. I mean, the way they've got it laid out, they could have used McGavick if, if, you know, there had been an offer to.
Yep, absolutely. Anything in the chamber? Any views from above? And what, what kind of activities are being prompted by our marketing work or anything else here in the city?
Well, gosh, I, I think that overall, you know, we're, we're just getting back into the swing of things and pleased to see that the city has had a robust program, programs for the summer months in particular. Love seeing people get out and about again. And I, I'm just keeping my fingers crossed and hoping that we're, we're past the worst of it. And I think that we can begin planning more events and activities for not only our community, but obviously our visiting public. So it's where we're sitting right now.
Great.
Yeah.
Well, we all hope that. Mr. Randstadter.
Yeah, just one other future visioning capital possibility. In, in, in the discussions and in some of the meetings about the Western State Hospital change and their master plan of where they're moving forward, there, more recently, some DSHS representatives have indicated that they may want, they want to divest themselves of the historic Fort Silicon area and buildings, which are things that to maintain or even bring them back up to what they should be as a, as a visiting venue. If that were, if we were to find a way to come to an agreement that either the city or a nonprofit was to get some ownership of that, that would be, I think, something that would fit within the definition of an eligible capital type expense.
Agreed. There's lots going on with the Western State project. And just as an aside, Mr. Anderson and I were invited to a meeting with some folks working on the master plan and the building designing. And one of the proposed contractors, big national company, wanted to meet with us just to discuss hypothetically, if they were to get the project, what kind of needs our community might have? Because our company has, is well-known for investing in the community in which they work in terms of philanthropic, tropic projects. And so we discussed generally the H-barn project and how it relates to mental health, because that was a historic site in the farm for Western State and how that might, you know, connect with that and some other exhibition work on, you know, mental health, past, present, and future. And they were very, very interested in potentially partnering on that. So we're setting up a, a meeting and a site visit on that. So anyway, there, there could be some good synergy where all these component pieces come together. So we'll see, more to follow. You never know until it's, you know, until it's over. Never over till it's over, but it's good to see activity and interest. Any else for the good of the order? Otherwise, thank you for your time tonight. Really appreciate you coming and, and we will see you, I think, after the first of August or September. We have our meeting. Got it. And then we have two vacancies, right? We need to fill. There's plenty of takers, but we need more givers, yeah. Which one? Oh, well, the Holiday and Express still exist. We just need to get a person from the hotel, yeah. Okay. Got it. Does Becky help with that on her BREs and perhaps outreach? That might be a good opportunity there. Absolutely. We'll have food. Mr. Randstadter.
So, you know, I understand for a variety of reasons vacancies can occur at, at any time. Plus, terms expire. Typically, what, 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 what date do terms expire? Okay, and November 1st is a, is a good date that annually the committee would have completed its work by then, although it would not be. I, I guess November 1st seems different than January 1st in that by November 1st, the council will not have acted on the committee's recommendations. The committee will have submitted recommendations. And the process is, is that if we disagree with a recommendation or want to send one back to ask them to change an amount, they might not be there. I would just say in future cycles, if we're able to adjust it, that a January 1st, which is the same date by which we've got to approve, have approved the budget would
Maybe statutory.
Avoid something happening that has never happened before.
We can take a look at that. It may be statutory though, but we can take a look at that just to confirm when it comes to us. The goal is to obviously get the recommendation in before that term ends. So that would be the goal. And I can assure you, it's going to go swimmingly this year, right, Linda? Smooth. Just perfect. All right, guys. Thanks again. Mr. Rashke, always good to see you and hear from you. Hope to connect and you too, Mr. Singh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is there time for one last alibi question?
Sure. For you, anything?
Yeah, at Tinsler Library, there's the giant tree. It's called the Big One.
Right.
Is there been any discussion of relocating it or what the intentions for it were?
I can tell you that this body is not directly engaged in those discussions. There's a subcommittee that's been appointed by both the library and the city and they're engaging in strategic discussions with the assistance of a facilitator, a consulting company that we have jointly hired to help with that process. But I am confident that the big piece of wood will be in everyone's forethought and mindset when they talk about their remodeling existing, moving to a new location.
Thank you for the response.
Yep, no problem. And we're all lucky that it can roll. So if it has to roll down the street, I'm sure it will.
Yeah, and the maintenance problems at the library have not included termites.
Right. Thank you. Thank you for coming on that. Thank you, sir. Next, we have the Pierce Transit Stream System Expansion Study Update. And for this, we have our Pierce Transit rep, Darren Stavish. Are they all appearing by Zoom? The Schumacher, all three? Okay, I thought one of them was going to be here.
Can you see us all okay?
I can. Didn't I just see you at four o'clock? Saw some of you at four o'clock.
Yes. The board meeting. Well, thank you for your interest in this. I'm Darren Stavish with Pierce Transit, the project manager for the Stream System Expansion Study that we endearingly call SSES. Next slide, please. The Destination 2040 Long Range Plan Update at 2020 identified four candidate stream BRT corridors in addition to the Pacific Avenue State Route 7 project, which is currently in design. These four corridors were selected based on criteria such as serving identified Pierce County Growth Centers, sound transit projects such as the Lakewood Sounder Station Access Improvements Project, bicycle pedestrian access to both existing and planned, locally approved transit supportive infield projects such as the Lakewood Station redevelopment and public input. Over time, the goal is to implement a network of five interconnected stream BRT corridors throughout the Pierce Transit Service Area. Next slide. The SSES, as I said, has evaluated which of these four existing fixed route quarters from the Destination 2040 Long Range Plan Update is most competitive to become Pierce Transit's second stream BRT corridor. The project began a year ago now and will be completed by the end of this year, 2022. Key elements of the study include assessing corridor conditions, including ridership patterns, opportunities for transit priority, such as bus lanes and bus signals, future growth potentials such as new housing, jobs or destinations. We also created an equity focused list of evaluation criteria to analyze and compare the corridors. Get when we're gathering public input from the public and a technical advisory committee, including representatives from jurisdictions, major employers, public health agencies and business associations. Your TAC members, by the way, are Paul Bucic and Ted Hill from Public Works Engineering. I'll now turn the presentation over to Amber Stanley, a senior planner at Pierce Transit to dive a bit deeper into the study and stream BRT quarter selection criteria. Amber?
Thank you, Darren. So hi, my name's Amber and throughout this process, we've engaged with the community and stakeholders. For example, we launched an online mapping comment survey where people could provide input about their travel patterns. We had a really great response from the community. We received about 418 unique responses. As Darren mentioned, we also have regular TAC meetings. The members of our TAC represent the local municipalities of the four routes that we analyzed for this study as well as other important agencies. And you can see a full list here on the right. As Darren mentioned, we had some of your representatives from Lakewood join us and we appreciate your support. Additionally, we held a virtual open house on June 29th and the purpose of that was to share a project update with the public and then also to gather input. Next slide, please. So here you can see the four quarters that were analyzed in this study. These are existing routes 2, 3, 4 and 402, which are referred to as letters in this study. So Route 2 is A, Route 3 is B, Route 402 is C and Route 4 is D. And three of these, A, B and D serve Lakewood. Next slide, please. Here you see routes 2 and 3. Route 2 is A and 3 is B. There are three possible variations for corridor A and B, which you can see here. For corridor A, option A connects downtown Tacoma to the Lakewood Transit Center, which is the existing route. Often, A1 extends to the Lakewood Sounder Station. We heard from TAC and from the public that connections here to Route 594 are important. A2 is a shorter route between Tacoma Community College and the Lakewood Transit Center. This avoids service duplication along 18th Street and the future Sound Transit key line with the transfer between Streetcar and Stream at TCC. In all variations, the route should be changed to serve Mildred slash 27th to better serve the future James Center North development. And if you take a look, you can also see that corridor B goes from downtown to the Lakewood Transit Center via South Tacoma Way and the South Tacoma Mall. We heard that land use here is mostly industrial along South Tacoma Way and the data also shows really low ridership. The Tacoma Transportation Master Plan also identifies both 38th and 48th as transit corridors. B1 serves the mall via 38th and B2 serves the mall via 48th. Next slide, please. And here you can see two options for corridor C. C is from downtown Puyallup where the Sounder Station is located and it goes up to Sunrise, which is in the South Hill area. And then for option C1, it is a similar corridor, however, it extends a little bit further north to Edgewood. You also see three options for Route D. D serves from Lakewood to Pierce College in Puyallup. Option D1 serves from Lakewood to the South Hill Mall in Puyallup. And option D2 serves from the Lakewood Sounder Station to Pierce College in Puyallup. And now I will hand it over to Paul Littman. He's one of our consultants from Nelson Mygard.
Thank you very much, Amber. Throughout this process, equity was incorporated into a lot of what we did. It was an important goal for the stream expansion study and we incorporated equity into the quarter evaluation, but also recognize the importance of equity in the federal funding process to make sure it aligns with the Federal Justice 40 Initiative, which aims to ensure federal transportation investments in disadvantaged communities. So we developed an equity index that identifies the combined density of demographic groups with different weighting for different groups. Higher weighting was given to non-white and Hispanic as well as low-income households with lower weighting for foreign-born populations, limited English-speaking households and people with disabilities. The map that you see shows those combined scores and you can see higher densities primarily throughout Tacoma, Lakewood and University Place. The table or chart on the bottom here shows the score for each corridor and both quarters A and B scored much more highly than C and D, primarily because of, you know, the increased density, but also their higher concentration of low-income individuals and more diverse groups. For, we ran all the corridors that Amber walked through, through an evaluation process and this evaluation included five accounts and each account was a grouping of multiple measures that had similar themes. And these accounts and the metrics were identified based on both local and regional goals and do include an equity focus. I won't go through all of the metrics that we use, but I will describe each of the accounts to give you a sense of what we analyzed. Enhance is the first account and it is meant to look at the region's highest demand and highest need corridors. Connect was looking at making sure that residents can easily get to jobs and other daily activities. Growing Prosper is about providing service to areas with land uses that have more people and more jobs to ensure that the future stream service is viable and well-used. And it also identifies areas where future growth is directed within Pierce County. Sustain is about reducing emissions and promoting sustained travel modes. And Deliver, the last of the accounts, is focused on identifying corridors that are fundable, cost-effective and implementable. Within these five accounts, there were total of 14 metrics. So the process I just described is one step in our evaluation process. So the first step that I walked through was about corridor prioritization. But the second step is more about readiness and this assesses the ability of each corridor to have a strong partnership to support the development of a corridor either through both the transit agencies, roadway owners, including the city of Lakewood and the community to make sure that we develop a successful stream corridor. And this second step is just as critical as the first step, but it is more qualitative. And together, these two will identify final prioritized corridor for stream two. So this slide shows the summary of the evaluation. In the table, each row is a single account and each column is a different alignment alternative that we analyzed. The darker green colors indicate better scoring. Each account for each alignment option can have a score up to five and the total scores are out of 25. And the maps at the top show the corridor option that scored highest for each corridor. Corridor B, which goes from downtown Tacoma through Tacoma Mall, South Tacoma Way to Lakewood Transit Center, had the highest scoring corridors and largely because of future growth and higher ridership potential. But corridor B2 via South 48th did score the highest. Within corridor A, the primary alignment from downtown Tacoma to Lakewood Transit Center had the best score, followed very, very closely by the A extension to the Lakewood Sounder Station. Corridor D1 scored the highest within D and this is the one that would go from Lakewood Town Center to the South Hill Mall Transit Center. So the next step in our process will be to assess readiness and something we've just started on. And we want to gain an understanding how each quarter would be assessed by the Federal Transit Administration's Small Starts Program. This is the same funding program that is providing funding for stream one. And the goal here is to elevate which of the quarters should go next. And although only one single corridor will be selected for project development, all corridors will have recommendations for improved service or what changes would be needed to make those corridors more competitive for federal funding in the future. I will now pass back to Darren to talk about some of the next steps in our process.
Thank you, Paul. To recap, the SSES is a preliminary look at which existing fixed route quarters potentially the strongest stream BRT candidate project. However, we should emphasize there's currently no funding available for implementation, which is a common place to be at this early point in development. Local funding would be needed to leverage any discretionary funding or state funds. Therefore, Pierce Transit will work hard to assess available grants, excuse me, access available grants such as FTA funding through the PSRC Regional Competition this fall as we continue building support and developing the project. The last thing I should mention is that we're asking Alexis officials, such as your mayor and city manager, to provide us something in writing regarding your level of support and possible partnership opportunities, because we can't do it alone as we learned through stream BRT1. And that's it in a nutshell. If, this is our contact information. I know it was fast. If you'd like to reach out to either myself or Amber Stanley and we can certainly afford any questions to the project team. Do we have time for questions now? Or is there anything we didn't cover that you'd like to talk about?
Well, since I'm on the board, I have a few questions, but
Please.
One of the longstanding conversations we've had as a council when discussing BRT for the benefit of Lakewood is perhaps extending out to either Telecom or something that would better serve the families of JBLM. And I know that none of the proposed corridors go that far south, right? So there's obviously some method to the madness on that based on ridership or or anticipated future ridership.
Yes, when we initially analyzed the corridors, we did look at service to Telecom as well as to Springbrook in our early alignment screening phase. And both of those options were removed before we got to the evaluation. And primarily because those options scored poorly on a lot of the metrics. There weren't, there was not sufficient density to warrant stream service and the length of the routes would likely reduce the productivity and efficiency of those services. But through that process, we did identify the importance of Route 206. There was a lot of transfer activity that we were seeing between the 206, which travels between Lakewood Transit Center and Telecom. And we are planning to include some recommendations to improve those connections from 206 to stream service as part of this report.
Got it. And I throw that out there as a softball, because it's been a conversation item for all of us for a few years anyway, so it's good for them to hear your feedback. My second question before I open it up to the panel is, we know BRT1 is on its way. You know, it's had its hiccups along the way. What's your thought on with this enhanced partnership you're doing really good outreach for to create? What's your thought on the, I guess, the enhanced viability of a good BRT2 project on one of the preferred corridors you've outlined? I mean, it's got to be a lot less money than BRT1. And just for the good of the order here, it's a $244 million project.
John, you want to, can I introduce John McMillan from KPFF? He's our lead on the study.
Thanks, Darren. Maybe from a big overview for the proposed improvements that we feel are viable for getting federal funding for BRT2. We're not proposing a significant investment in BRT services themselves. The ridership and frequency will be, you know, tied accordingly, but the amount of traffic trade-offs for general purpose versus what our transit priority is having is going to be a little bit less for the next phases. And we looked at kind of the needs for transit and the needs for removing delay. And they weren't as strong for stream two for any of the quarters as they are for, as was proposed in stream one. That project is a different project, is a much higher level investment for BRT service itself. But stream two is going to be a great project. It's custom for, you know, the needs of the community and also for trying to get a project that's viable and is a good cost benefit ratio and scores well for the small starts program. So
Great.
One of the quick things I just want to say is we're not really proposing a lot of transit-only lanes in this project, which is one of the bigger changes you'll see from stream one to stream two for particularly for corridor B. I know that's a particularly an important aspect to note for everybody on this panel.
Very good. Well, thank you for that. Questions by members of council? Mr. Bransdottir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess that I, first of all, just say that I'm disappointed that the the BRT route didn't move. One of the options that was discarded was to move it any further south than 108th Street. And particularly that it had a sort of kind of disregard getting the BRT service readily available to folks in Springbrook, which is an area that would add considerably to your equity type index that you have, given that neighborhood. But it also seems to be a disconnect with the efforts of sound transit. The sound transit has made a commitment to invest in developing non-motorized and motorized ways for Springbrook folks to access the Sounder Station through improvements on 47th Street and within Springbrook that would allow them to do that. And not getting the BRT to then be able to make a connection at the Sounder Station, which is another four blocks from 108th Street where you're going to turn. from 108th Street where you're going to turn off is because at the Sounder Station, you can get on ST Express bus service or the Sounder, but it doesn't take you to the Tacoma Mall or the Nally Valley employment aspects to do that. And so I guess that I would ask that if you're not planning to consider JBLM as a significant employment center and that Telecom is too far, that the Sounder Station, in conjunction with the enhancements that Sound Transit is going to fund for people to be able to get to the Sounder Station, getting a BRT service at extra four blocks and then and being able to then get down to the Lakewood Town Center along Bridgeport would would add a good number of potential riders that fit within that equity element that you say you're trying, trying, trying to achieve. And it would be a more coordinated effort between the two transit agencies in Lakewood than any of the B routes. I mean, the differences between the B route seem to be exactly how they wander through Tacoma, which is, which is fine, however that works out, that's that's good, but that extra four blocks could really make a difference to quite a few people in populations we want to serve in Lakewood. So there's a way to just relook at how to fix that connectivity because the connectivity doesn't it doesn't actually exist at the 512 parking ride, it exists at the Sounder Station.
And I will, thank you for that comment. I think we do recognize that Lakewood Sounder Station is a very important destination to serve. And corridor, although we had it on Corridor A and D as one of the options to serve Sounder, there was a recognition that some of the data analysis would also show the potential extension from Corridor B. And so the final alignment for any of these quarters is not set through this current study. When, once we have a prioritized corridor to advance to the next phase, there will be more in-depth look at the exact alignment that the quarter could take. So there's still an opportunity for either A, B, or D, if it is selected as the prioritized corridor, to still serve the Lakewood Sounder Station.
Is there a possibility, obviously it's early, that it could serve, as Mr. Brandstetter indicates, both stops, the Sounder Station and the Town Center because there are different reasons that both are significant. We've got a very large development project in this area called Lakewood Landing that is roughly kitty-corner from the Sounder Station, and that could have huge population employment opportunities there in the future. And the connectivity from that particular location to the Sounder Station is pretty critical. So anyway, any other thoughts or comments? Ms. Farmer?
Thank you for the presentation. I wanted to make sure I understood correctly. One of the comments flew by pretty quickly regarding South Tacoma Way being largely warehousing. And I wanted to point out that in a particular part of Lakewood, there's a lot of amazing restaurants and eateries and not necessarily, and grocery stores and that sort of thing. And so what with a Lakewood Station being on the Pacific Highway South part of, part of that road, there's, there are some wonderful opportunities there. I just wanted to make sure I didn't, didn't mishear the characterization of warehousing.
I believe that was in reference to the South Tacoma Way that runs east-west alongside the interstate. And that's to differentiate it from Thirty-Eighth or Forty-Eighth. So sorry for that mischaracterization, but yes, we do recognize there's a lot of businesses and activity and high ridership on the existing Route Three along South Tacoma Way between Tacoma Mall and Lakewood Town Center.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Any other thoughts for the good of the order? My friends at Sound, at Pierce Transit?
We would ask too, if you'd be willing to put any of these thoughts, comments, suggestions in writing as we're getting from other councils, that would be much appreciated too.
Absolutely. Happy to do that. I know that Mr. Griffith sent a letter to Mr. Coffield and myself with regard to the project, seeking letter support. So we'll probably put some, some thoughts in that in addition to the supportive letter.
Yeah, that's an excellent vehicle for, for adding these comments.
Very good.
Well, thank you for having us. Thank you for your interest.
Well, we appreciate your time and thanks.
Our pleasure.
Take care. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You too.
Okay, so next, we're going to review the 2022 National Community Survey findings. And I think Mr. Vargas, our assistant as the city manager, is going to lead us through that. Mr. Vargas, come on down. Looking sharp tonight for an eighty-five degree weather. You must have known that it was going to be fifty-five in here. Yeah. Yes, exactly. Exactly. Yeah. So you have a, there we go, something on the screen. Perfect.
All right. So, good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members. Michael Vargas here to go over the 2022 National Community Survey results. Let's get started. So, the National Community Survey, as many members of the council here know, is a a community satisfaction survey that gathers sentiments from Lakewood residents as to what the, you know, how well is the city doing in terms of our policy, services, and amenities? As well as gathers from residents what our policy priorities should be as a city government for the next two years. It also gathers how Lakewood residents feel about the Lakewood community as a whole. So not only us, the city government, but also how they feel about their neighbors and such. So the survey is administered by Polco slash the National Research Center, which I would refer to as the researchers. And this is the third year of survey, the NCS, here in Lakewood. Two previous years being 2017 and 2015. So we have a wealth of data to look at over all three years since mostly the questions remain similar between, between the survey years. But, you know, comparing 2022 with 2017 results offers a pretty unique advantage point, as, well, to put it mildly, a lot has changed since 2017. So comparing those two survey years allows us to compare pre-pandemic outcomes along with mid-pandemic outcomes. And a focus of my results analysis this year was on equity. So equity is codified in several places, one of which being the City Council Goals 2021 through 2024 under the goal of a robust and active community. So I went ahead and listed the specific objectives slash strategies that specifically incorporate equity. And another source from, from my analysis was here in the City Council's statement on equity that was passed last year. Particularly this impactful statement here. "We are committed to identifying and eliminating systemic racism." So, you know, as you've gleaned from the, my, my analysis, my equity focus is really honed in on examining the differences between BIPOC, Indigenous, and People of Color, I'll refer to as BIPOC, and white respondents in order to service that, that first action they're identifying. But really, personally, I think that the next step of actually linking racial differences to, you know, as a result of systemic racism, is a project that's outside of the scope of this one. I really thought really looking at racial differences really serves that first action of actually identifying it. And key practices from the equity statement that relate to the equity focus of my analysis include ensuring equity municipal planning and also identifying and dismantling preconceived prejudices. So how did I operationalize equity in my analysis? Well, I produced what I will call fourteen Equity Insights that proposed possible explanations for the racial differences observed in the NCS ratings. I would like to note that, you know, while I did use NCS data in conjunction with national empirical research, which I've extrapolated to Lakewood as evidence for these explanations, short of rigorous quantitative research into these insights, these are just possible explanations. So alternative explanations may apply completely. But really, one of the major goals of producing these insights was to try to tell a story with the data, specifically to start discussions about observed racial differences and to identify areas of future inquiry and possible focus for policy. So, as the researchers put it, the NCS measures livability. And of the one hundred and forty-four NCS questions, they were arranged under what the researchers call ten facets of livability. So I'll just run through them quickly here, going clockwise. We have mobility, which includes public transportation as well as just general transportation patterns. We have community design, inclusivity and engagement, health and wellness, the economy, utilities, parks and recreation, natural environment, education, arts and culture, and safety, which is to include public safety. Additionally, questions are arranged under three more categories, which aren't necessarily facets. Those include governance, or how do the Lakewood residents feel about us as a city government as a whole? It also includes participation. So how are residents participating in the political process here in Lakewood? Terms of voting, you know, the contacting Lakewood officials? And the final category is what the researchers call quality of life. I believe those are four questions pertaining to, and how do you feel about the overall reputation of Lakewood? As well as you plan on staying here in the long term? So here we see the survey recipient map. So this is a map of the twenty-seven hundred households who received the NCS this year. The map is broken down geographically by police district, which was used in previous NCS maps as well. So I want to explain the methodology of the, of the study here. So the researchers deployed for the first time this year in Lakewood what's called a mixed method approach. So of the twenty-seven hundred households, fifteen hundred households received the, you know, the traditional physical copy of the survey in the mail, which they could then fill out and then mail back with postage paid, as well as a postcard with a URL link on it. So if the residents elected to, they could, you know, put that into their internet browser and take the same exact survey online. And then the remaining twelve hundred households just received the URL invitation postcard. The researchers have been doing this in, as of late, because it allows them to reach a greater number of households while, you know, keeping costs down with the goal of increasing the amount of surveys returned. So as you can see here, let's look at the left-hand table. Under the row that says total, we see that two hundred and eighty-eight surveys were returned this year, which is actually the greatest number of surveys returned out of all three survey years. So it looks like their, their mixed method is working here in Lakewood. I believe in previous years, around thirteen hundred to fourteen hundred households were contacted just with the traditional physical mailer. So by contacting twenty-seven hundred households this year with the mixed method, we managed to almost double the amount of households reached, which consequently means that we've actually seen the lowest return rate out of all three years at eleven percent. I believe previous years were around thirteen to fourteen percent. Looking at the red rectangle there, those, as you can see, the percentage returned for police districts two and three are at six and two percent respectively. And as the researchers put it, that's quite low. These police districts contain neighborhoods such as Springbrook, the International District, Lakewood Station, which are home to prominent BIPOC populations here in Lakewood. So as I'll go over my recommendation section, next time we do the NCS, we may elect to actually focus our research, our outreach efforts in these areas to ensure that the survey results are that much more representative of quickly before we move on, the police district with the most return at forty-two percent by a large margin was Police District Five, which contains Lake City and Lake District. Moving on here. So the, let's look at the demographics of the respondents. So I'm going to be looking at the unweighted column here. So the respondents before weighting tended to be fifty-five and older, live in districts five and six, which includes Lake City, Lakes District, Oak Brook, and Silicon, the neighborhood. They tended to be homeowners in detached housing, white, and female. So after weighting is applied, which is a statistical technique, which makes the sample population look more like the overall population and thus makes the results of the survey statistically accurate. After that method is applied, looking at the weighted column, we can see that the demographic proportions of the sample look much more like the overall demographic proportions of Lakewood, which is noted in the target column there. And I believe the researchers used US Census Bureau data to get those overall population demographics proportions. So yeah, of course, of course. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so while I thought it was important to, you know, see how the statistical method of weighting, you know, brings those demographic proportions up to, to look similar to the overall population in Lakewood, I thought it was important to see who actually responded to the NCS. And we can see that by looking at the unweighted column there, which will inform our outreach efforts next time. Moving on. So the quality and importance matrix. This is a graphic produced by the researchers, which another good name for it really should be our residents' policy priorities. So each of the ten facets of livability I went over earlier, each have two questions associated with them on the NCS. One question related to quality. So for example, how do you feel about the quality of Lakewood's economy? And another question related to importance. So how important is the economy as a policy area to you as a Lakewood resident? So the researchers went ahead and plotted each of the ten facets by quality and importance, with quality on the vertical and importance on the horizontal. And to no surprise, according to the researchers, the economy and public safety are by far the most important facets for Lakewood residents. But specific to us, we see that they were rated lower in quality relative to the other facets there. So I was important to, you know, gather what are the most important policy areas for our residents. I think it's also good to look at the other quadrants there. So looking at the top two quadrants, the blue and green, we see that these are facets of livability, which are rated relatively high, which include utilities, natural environment, parks and recreation, health and wellness, and mobility, just a bit there. And looking at the lower, the yellow quadrant there, we see these are facets that are lower in quality, but also lower in importance, such as inclusivity and engagement, education, arts, and culture, as well as community design. So this matrix is just one more tool in the city's toolbox as we're gearing up to, you know, set our priorities and allocate resources for the next biennium. It's a really good shorthand as to how our residents feel about what our, where our priorities should lie in terms of policy. Moving on. Moving on. So how did we do? While comparing twenty-twenty-two results with twenty-seventeen results, we saw twenty-one ratings increase between the two survey years. Uh, to quickly go over them, looking at one through ten there, we see economic ratings that include vibrant downtown and commercial area, uh, op, employment opportunities, Lakewood as a place to work. We also see some city services such as street cleaning, sidewalk maintenance, as well as stormwater drainage. Um, looking at eleven through twenty-one, we see animal control services. Uh, we see air quality, natural areas preservation as relates to natural environment ratings. We see path and walking trails related to parks and recreation. Uh, we also see some inclusivity ratings such as sense of community, opportunities to volunteer. And finally, the last two are related to governance. So how did we do as a city government in welcoming resident involvement and treating all residents fairly? So the flip side of this is that we saw ten ratings decrease since twenty-seventeen. Uh, and they're kind of varied here, but to go over them quickly, we have opportunities for education. We have residents' connection and engagement with their community. Uh, it's no surprise as you know, pandemic uh adversely affected that. Uh, we see availability of affordable housing, which actually mirrors a national trend. Um, we also see garbage collection, crime prevention, recycling. And moving on to the next slide. So this pie chart is a good summation of the previous two, uh, while placing them in context. So while we saw twenty-one rating increase, while we saw ten ratings decrease, um, overall, a vast majority of our ratings between the two survey years remain the same. Uh, you know, a hundred and thirteen ratings. Um, so you know, that really speaks to, you know, the strength and resiliency of the community, uh, especially over the past several years to keep a majority of these ratings the same, um, as well as, you know, the city's part in our public policy to help those ratings remain similar as well. Um, so while, you know, the results analysis really focuses on the differences between the two years, it's important to sit, look at this chart and say, hey, a majority of these ratings remain the same. So moving on here. Yeah.
Are there some categories without looking or digging in right now of the hundred and thirteen where we didn't move the needle in the public's perception, but as a council with our priorities, we really wanted to? So what are some of the significant ones where we should have, but we didn't and we missed the mark from the public's perception?
Yeah, uh, maybe, maybe diving into this next slide here. Um, so this shows the same slide but broken down by facet as well as a category. Um, so you can see here, you know, just looking real quick, that majority of the facets, um, well, most of those ratings actually stayed the same, looking at the gray area there. Um, looking at, I believe, health and wellness, all the ratings were similar, um, as well as quality of life. Uh, looking at the green areas, the, those are where the, the rating increases are concentrated, uh, which were in the economy and natural environment. So those two areas actually saw the most ratings increase between the two years. Um, looking at the red, we see where the ratings decreased. Um, so they tended to decrease in quality and importance, looking at the leftmost two. Um, with the most rating decreases uh concentrated in participation. Uh, again, that refers to how Lakewood residents are participating in policy process here. So are they contacting elected officials? Are they attending public meetings? Uh, as well as how they're engaging with the community, um, are they attending community meetings, for example? Uh, so that's where we saw the most decreases.
What's the second one from the left? Importance to Lakewood, importance of what to Lakewood?
Yeah, so those refer to um the quality and importance matrix. So each of these categories has a question about importance and a question about quality related to them. Uh, so we saw some, well, frankly, some facets decreased in importance between the two, two um survey years. And we can dive into the specifics, uh, in the appendix. I've included tables that show the uh specific percentages um and how they decreased throughout the year, between the two years, so.
Sure.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm, I'm surprised by the deduction in education. Are there any signs, any uh leverage that they received as to why they felt that way?
Yeah, um, but we can look into the tables, uh, because I don't know offhand which exactly under that category decreased. Uh, it's education, arts, culture, that's kind of a broad category, but we'd have to see a specific question about education decreased, uh, but we can look at that in the table, um, following the presentation. Yeah. So moving on. So national benchmarks comparison. Um, so the NCS is a standardized survey that's administered all over the country to a variety of different communities. Um, in my memo, I included a table that shows the actual demographics of the NCS communities, um, in terms of their population size and their geographic locations. Are they located on the West Coast, East Coast, et cetera? Uh, I believe that's important context to have as we compare our ratings to the pool of NCS ratings, which this graph shows. Um, before I dive in here, another point of context to have is that because, well, the NCS pool uh is composed now of both pre-pandemic outcomes and mid-pandemic outcomes. So that should be taken into consideration when we're comparing our own ratings with the pool of NCS communities. Uh, but looking at our, how our ratings measured up this year to that pool, we see that Lakewood was behind on many facets here. Um, with most of the, um, most of those decreases uh fo- focused on, I believe, as community design, um, as well as quality of life, inclusivity and engagement. Um, looking at the slightly redder areas, those are ratings that were rated much lower than national benchmark, which I believe that's a twenty percent difference. So it's twenty, so a given rating was twenty percent lower than the national benchmark average. And those tended to be concentrated in public safety and the, and the quality questions there on the left. Um, so looking at the gray areas though, we see that we were on par with the NCS communities in parks and recreation as well as governance. And looking at the green area, uh, though that was found in mobility, and I believe that's, that specifically refers to our public transportation, um, the quality of that in Lakewood. So we are a leader amongst our NCS peers. And again, I have a table in the appendix that lays out specifically which questions were lower or higher, um, compared to the NCS community pool. Moving on. So this graph, uh, summation of comparison between BIPOC and white respondents ratings. Um, and as my equity focus really dives in and to explain the differences we see between the two groups, uh, I thought it was important context to see that, well, a majority of ratings were similar between the two groups. You know, seventy-five percent, three out of four ratings were similar between BIPOC and white respondents. Uh, which I believe is important context to have as we, as we move forward here. So this next graph breaks down the ratings by um facet again. Uh, so looking at the green area, we see that, well, again, in a lot of facets here, a majority of the ratings were similar between the two groups, uh, with, I believe, utilities and um parks and recreation, the two facets with similar, uh, completely similar ratings. Uh, we see that the facet with the most differences was under governance, uh, with five rating differences. Um, and again, that's how the residents feel about us as a govern, city government as a whole. I believe some questions asked, you know, how do you feel about the value of your taxes paid? You know, are we treating everyone fairly? Those, those sorts of questions. Uh, we also see differences, um, concentrated in the quality and importance questions on the left. Um, also public safety as well, um, and education, arts and culture with some differences um throughout as well. So the next slide, yep, that's a memory.
Okay, so, so not wanting to make an assumption. There are difference between the way white respondents and BIPOC respondents responded to these. But this slide doesn't say whether BIPOC respondents and whi- which, which was rating something higher.
Exactly, Councilmember Brandstetter. Uh, so that would be include, I have the specific, you know, line by line percentage differences in the appendix table. It's quite a large appendix. Um, but all the tables are there, especially for uh this comparison specifically, and it will show, you know, which one was actually higher or lower. Um, but yeah, as a shorthand, I, I did include that in this, this graphic here.
Okay, I guess that would just be an interesting thing to look at. Particularly if there is a mix, if, if, if something BIPOC residents actually rated things higher than, than, than others and otherwise, uh, or if that never happened, that, that'd be significant too, um, you know, to try, try to, 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 to figure that out. Okay, thank you.
Yes, I agree. And actually, I actually dive into those, um, in the executive summary, um, in this presentation, um, in, in my equity insights. So it'll list, you know, BIPOC respondents listed this higher or this lower. So that'll be incorporated in the presentation as well, but yeah, I'm happy to go into the, um, into the tables as well. So moving on here. So this graph is statistically accurate versus open participation results. Uh, so this year on the NCS in Lakewood was the first year that the researchers incorporated what's called an open participation component, uh, which means that the city received a URL link that we then distributed amongst our communication channels such as the city website, uh, as well as our social media. And that, that link allowed anyone with a Lakewood um address to take the same exact survey as the twenty-seven hundred households um did as well. Um, so how to read this graph here? Um, the red area are, shows one hundred and four ratings on the open participation survey were rated lower than their corresponding ratings on the statistically accurate survey. Um, and this is quite common to see, according to the researchers, is that when you open up the survey to everyone, you know, in a very non-random way, uh, you tend to see that open participation results are lower than, um, the random sample uh results, uh, because there is a degree of self-selection happening in that, you know, folks with that were, that are, you know, the most passionate and in our case, then to have more negative views will seek out and take that survey. Um, so this is a common occurrence among NCS communities. Yep. So I wanted to include this and provide some context. And again, I have a table of this in the appendix. We can, you know, look at which um, which ratings were it lower or what have you here. So executive summary, there is a lot of information packed in these next slides. Um, and I'm happy to dive into any one of these insights, go into the tables and whatnot, um, as we move along. So to start off, let's look at the economy. So NCS results found economy as a focus area. Several economy ratings increased since twenty-seventeen, and I have those on the next slide. Uh, but for Equity Insight One, NCS results and national trends may indicate that BIPOC and white residents are patronizing different local business areas by BIPOC residents walking more to local businesses, leading to differing perceptions of local business quality and variety. Um, so on these NCS, we found that BIPOC respondents rated more highly local business quality and variety than white respondents, uh, which I believe were the only two um racial differences in the economy category. So looking at um which economic ratings increased since twenty-seventeen, we have five here. Uh, we have the vibrancy of the downtown and commercial area at forty-five percent positive ratings. Uh, we have economic development services. We have Lakewood as a place to work. We have employment opportunities and overall quality of business and service establishments. And these are the absolute percentages, not, not the increase in ratings. So forty-five percent positive in twenty-twenty-two, for example. Moving on, public safety. Uh, NCS results found public safety as another focus area. Despite most public safety ratings being lower than twenty-twenty-two national benchmarks, and we saw that in the graphic earlier, uh, most ratings were similar or have increased compared to the city's own twenty-seventeen ratings. Uh, so Equity Insight Two. Compared to BIPOC residents, white residents may be interacting with crime prevention services more in having fewer positive experiences, rating crime prevention lower on the NCS. Compared to white residents, BIPOC residents may be interacting with animal control services more and having more positive experiences, rating animal control higher on the NCS. For Equity Insight Three. BIPOC respondents rated feeling less safe, both generally and from violent crime than white respondents on the NCS, uh, possibly due to higher exposure to crime based on geographic location and socioeconomic status, rather than a negative perception of the city's public safety services, uh, which the NCS found that BIPOC resident respondents and white respondents rated police services similarly. And BIPOC respondents, um, as we'll see from the tables, were actually more likely to favorably rate, um, the city as the city government as a whole in terms of our customer service, which includes the police, um, as well as values for taxes paid. Uh, which leads to, you know, perhaps that it, one source for that, that difference in, um, it feeling less safe would not be from how BIPOC residents are perceiving our public safety services. Since they tend to rate it similarly or even higher in white respondents. So looking uh into the public safety ratings, twenty-twenty-two ratings that were much lower or lower than national benchmarks include crime prevention at thirty-seven percent positive ratings, feelings of safety from property crime, and feelings of safety from violent crime. And just to be clear, these are for, this is the overall ratings, um, for both groups. Uh, for twenty-twenty-two ratings that increased since twenty-seventeen, uh, we see bio-prevention increased, uh, which now has a seventy-six percent positive rating in twenty-twenty-two, as well as animal control services. So mobility and utilities facets. Mobility, specifically public transportation and utilities remained a key strength throughout the pandemic since most of these NCS ratings remained similar or increased since twenty-seventeen. So Equity Insight Four. BIPOC respondents rated street lighting less favorably and street repairs more favorably than white respondents, which may be due to BIPOC residents walking city areas with lower quality street lighting and higher quality street repairs than white residents. So national environment and parks and recreation. So NCS ratings such as walking trails, city parks' quality and fitness opportunities improved since twenty-seventeen. And Equity Insight Five. BIPOC respondents rated quality of parks and recreation opportunities lower than white respondents, which may be due to geographic and socioeconomic factors impacting accessibility to city parks and recreational activities. Equity Insight Six. NCS results found that BIPOC respondents disfavored yard waste and recycling services more than white respondents, which may be due to ra- racial differences in socioeconomic status and housing outcomes impacting the accessibility of these services. Yes.
Okay, so on, on that last insight. I guess I'm trying to understand how garbage collection and recycling and that. It's required in, 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 in the same provider and the same containers and the same service is in all the neighborhoods.
Yeah.
There's not a and, and, and I don't see there's an accessibility. I mean, I, I, so I guess what, what does accessibility mean? I mean, perhaps accessibility can be defined if more people live in a, if you live in an apartment, maybe your accessibility is less than if you have a house and you have your own personal containers than if you have a dumpster that's, that's, that's using it to serve that. Uh, but that's uh seems a little different than the way it's described.
Yeah.
Uh, I mean, because we, we, we've done a contract to, to make accessibility at least is very similar. Very similar everywhere. Which is just strange wording to me.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that point up, Councilmember Branstadter, about, you know, perhaps it's due to differences in, you know, housing. For example, in the memo, I actually used national data, which shows that BIPOC residents, I believe specifically black and Hispanic residents, are more likely to live in attached housing, to mean to include multifamily housing, which indeed may include apartment complexes, which may or may not have, you know, adequate amounts of, you know, waste or recycling to meet those demands of that specific housing development. That is one possible source for these racial differences in how, you know, the two groups are viewing waste and recycling services. But yes, I'm glad you brought that point up. That is one of the lines of reasoning that I found in my research.
That makes some sense. Apartment.
Yeah.
Attached dwellings versus multifamily.
Yeah, and I believe that's actually sort of, I believe that's part of the counties, you know, their new comprehensive waste plan to address, you know, recycling services specifically in multifamily housing developments. So that is that is a noted and perceived, you know, one difference there. So, yeah. Moving on here, education, arts and culture, and inclusivity and engagement facets. So most NCS ratings in these two facets remain similar or increased in 2017, with improvements in volunteer opportunities and sense of community. Compared to 2022 national benchmarks, Lakewood is behind on many inclusivity and engagement ratings. Equity Insight 7, NCS results indicated that white respondents disfavored K through 12 education in Lakewood more than BIPOC respondents, possibly due to white parents sending their children to schools outside the city school district more than BIPOC parents. This outcome may be indicated from data showing disproportionate racial proportions between the Lakewood community and the city's school district student body. Equity Insight 8, BIPOC respondents rated having more trouble accessing affordable quality childcare slash preschool than white respondents, possibly due to racial differences in socioeconomic status and availability of culturally competent care. Equity Insight 9, BIPOC residents may feel less positive about the inclusivity of the Lakewood community than white residents, due to BIPOC respondents having rated participating in community matters, Lakewood community respects people from diverse backgrounds, and Lakewood as a place to retire less than white respondents. So community design and health and wellness. Most NCS ratings for community design and health and wellness remain similar since 2017, with only affordable housing availability having decreased, which aligns with national trends that, you know, there's a much greater demand for affordable housing nowadays. That's been increasing over the years. Most community design ratings were lower than national benchmarks in these two ratings, such as, oh, sorry, for community design ratings, such as well-designed neighborhoods and own neighborhood as a place to live. So Equity Insight 10, BIPOC residents may be spending more time in city public areas than white residents, which may be due to BIPOC residents spending less time in their own neighborhoods, indicated by BIPOC respondents rating own neighborhood as a place to live less than white respondents. That is assuming that spending time in your own neighborhood is a substitute for spending time at, say, a city park or the library. So Equity Insight 11, BIPOC residents may be patronizing more diverse and affordable quality local restaurants and grocery stores than white residents, leading to a more favorable, more favorable perceptions of affordable quality food availability. As BIPOC residents, I believe they were, BIPOC respondents rated availability of affordable local food higher than than white respondents on the NCS. So that seeks to explain that difference. This may be due to BIPOC respond residents being concentrated in more urban city areas with walkable environments and high business densities, such as the International District, that may contain, that contain a high concentration of diverse and affordable quality food options, such as along South Tacoma Way there. So looking at Equity Insight 12 here, BIPOC residents may be utilizing local healthcare options more than white residents, which led BIPOC respondents to more favorably rate availability of affordable quality healthcare in Lakewood than white respondents. This outcome may be attributed to national research showing that white residents are more likely to be privately insured than BIPOC residents, which may lead to more healthcare option choices, including out-of-city alternatives. And finally, governance, participation, and quality of life. Most NCS ratings for governance, participation, and quality of life remain similar since 2017, although most quality of life ratings, such as overall Lakewood reputation and remaining in Lakewood for the next five years, were lower than 2022 national benchmarks. So Equity Insight 13, BIPOC respondents were more likely to think positively of the Lakewood city government than white respondents, along a number of dimensions, such as being treated fairly and value of taxes paid. This outcome may be due to both BIPOC respondents having better interactions with this Lakewood city government and national research that indicate white residents are more likely to distrust governments, possibly including local governments, than BIPOC residents when a Democrat is president. Equity Insight 14, BIPOC respondents indicated having less positive outlooks on remaining in Lakewood, both short term and long term, than white respondents. This may be caused by a number of factors, such as satisfaction with own neighborhood, feelings of safety, and inclusivity of the Lakewood community. So that last insight there really ties together a lot of other insights along the way. So recommendations. First one, city council may consider oversampling police districts to and three, which again contain the neighborhoods such as Springbrook, International District, that contain, that are home to prominent BIPOC populations, given the low response rates from these areas. So again, while the results of the NCS survey are statistically accurate, by increasing the number of responses from this area, it will only serve to make the, well, for one, it will make the survey more statistically accurate, but also more representative of Lakewood as a whole. And the final recommendation there, city council may consider adding specific questions concerning ARPA-funded city programs to gauge program effectiveness, as well as to identify any racial differences in program outcomes. Since, you know, since the last time this survey was done in 2017, the city has committed ARPA funding to a number of programs, and it may be worth considering to, you know, include specific questions to residents about those programs, and the same analysis may be undertaken as well. And that concludes my presentation. I invite any questions or comments from the council. Thank you.
How much do we pay for this?
Fifteen thousand?
Divided by 226 responses? Statistically accurate, I'm not sure statistically significant.
Significant.
Yeah, and that's my concern. It's like 63,000 residents, and we get 226 responses back? It's really hard to enunciate policy directives based on 226. Ms. Farmer?
So I had the privilege of institute of implementing the NCS survey when I was with the City of Federal Way, and I am, I am beside myself. I am so, I'm so upset right now. The fifteen thousand dollars was not, was not well spent. I'm very disappointed. I'm not sure why we did this survey. I'm also extremely concerned that I'm hearing may and possibly. We survey so that we will know. We survey so that we will have a starting point, so that we can work with our residents to find out certainties rather than than may's and possibles. And so I don't, I don't know what to do with this. I've, the recommendations tell us maybe what to do with next year's survey, but we should have answers that we can do something with this year. I'm sorry, I, this is, this is, this is, yeah. So I would like to follow up more. I'm not sure truly how to do that, so.
Well, I mean, certainly, there's, 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 there's a lot of data here that if we have Mr. Vargas and us, if we, if we really want to torture it, we can get it to say what we want to. But, but, but there is some valuable information that that comes out of it, and it's, I think it's not as much in the, in the, in the answers to the individual questions and the benchmarks, but it's, it's into the trend. And I do like Mr. Vargas's efforts and think that what we have to do is we have to not look for answers, but we have to look for insights, right? That insights are important. And there are, there are, there are some insights from this that, that I take away, okay, and others that I'd have to think about. But the first one has to do with public safety, okay? And it's no surprise to us that people, people are concerned about doing it. But it's also noted that public safety was by far rated as the highest importance, regardless of what people thought about it, whether it's good or bad, or the individual categories. And, and I think that that's important to us because we made budgetary decisions about how much of the city people's tax dollars to invest in public safety, and we invest, we invest a lot. And I say that, you know, that that's, that's the right thing to do, to be able to go and do it. The other insight I got is that we spend a lot of our effort on community development, zoning, subarea plans, and how we go and do that, in that. It doesn't seem to be appreciated. But part of that seems to be is, and I think about Woodbrook, is the work that we're doing to try to move the needle in community development is we're doing things so that the needle will move in 10 years. You know, it, it, you know, we should, I guess, you know, we shouldn't expect a whole lot of kudos because we did a central business district plan. 10 years from now, the people that are at this table, those folks will get all the kudos for things that happened because of things that we did two years ago. That will go on and on. I question whether we should continue to use and carve the city up and evaluate it based on police districts. I think that some of our districts are large and include areas that don't have anything in common with each other. I mean, we got into the police district as a, as a place to basis thing as opposed to census tracts, okay, and other things. Back when, right after we formed a police department, and there were a program of grants called Weed and Seed, and you had to do that, and we formulated our neighborhood associations, and we gathered data by police districts, because that was, that was going forward. But, you know, the District 5, which is Lake City, but includes the neighborhoods where I live and that, and that Jason lives and that, and that area just to the east of, of, for Silicon Park, you know, those neighborhoods, they don't, they don't think of themselves as in Lake City. They don't, they don't do that. It works fine for the chief because he's got, got to divide the city up some way to be able to do his job. But I don't know that us to expect commonality of thinking within those districts is, is right. The fact that we think the people in the, in the country club will think the same way as the people in Springbrook is, is strange to me. So I think on a future survey, we may want to do more of a census-based approach, and perhaps ask, even ask Mr. Mr. Gumm to look at, how does he consider, do we do that and those things to be able to go and do that? The most humorous statistic was the statistically relevant data said that 60% of the people voted in the last local election, whereas the auditor said 18. So somehow or another, that's something we found. And then another change would be in conjunction with the question about wanting to survey how we're impacting ARPA things to do that, is that we didn't survey anybody below 18. The survey is restricted to being 18 or older. And I think if the next time we do that, if we were to survey a sampling of 15 to 17 year olds, that. I'm convinced we'd get some really honest responses, okay? And, 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 and actually some answers to some things that we're really trying to do, since we really do spend a lot of energy and dollars in trying to improve things for young people. And, and we actually take some pride in what we think, what we do for young people. So.
Just from our youth council doing it.
Mr. Vargas, I don't know, I don't remember from the survey is, is it, do they survey under 18? Because if we did, and we did, we would, would we have nationally comparable data?
Yeah, Councilmember Farmer, I was just discussing this. Actually, one component of the random sample method is that once a household receives a survey, whoever's birthday is closest to some arbitrary date takes the survey. So that's another way to prevent self-selection bias, which there may indeed be methodologies to, you know, target specific, you know, age groups, for example. The way the NCS is done, I don't believe that they would be able to accommodate that. Yeah.
One of the, one of the amazing benefits of this survey is that you get to compare yourself nationally. And so it, I'm a huge proponent of this, of this survey, and I think we need to double our budget next year in order to get a better statistically significant sample. But I think your idea is intriguing, and maybe we can supplement it with some other non-statistically significant opportunities.
Yeah, if we were to do it through a different geographic selection, then we basically have to kind of toss out the prior surveys, because we'd be doing something different with a different metric and different measurements, maybe, right? Because if you change the districts up, you can't compare to the last two surveys that were based on districts.
Yeah, Mayor, I'd have to check with, and see, I'm not, I think the police district breakdown, it was just sort of, you know, we applied the researchers by the afterwards. Yeah, yeah. I don't think that, I don't think that informs their random selection process. So we could, we could divvy up the map however we would like.
Got it.
Yeah, we can do census tract, maybe our own by neighborhood, you know, we could submit based on our own GIS data at the city, we can.
Okay. We can take the data, and we can torture it any way we want to.
Exactly.
Yes. Yeah.
Who's broken? Any question? Comment?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I'm, I mean, it's basically the same survey that we've had two other times. And so I'm not, I spend more time dwelling on what is page 53 of our packet that has most of the comparisons where percent.
that has most of the comparisons where percent rating positively excellent or good. And it, I don't know that there's any real huge surprises in there. And the trends are slow, which I would expect them to be. I don't, I, I don't see any silver bullets anywhere. I'm, you know, I'm not surprised we, you know, lay out of community. That's one of the reasons for a city. The, it doesn't make sense, right? Roads don't go in any one direction and, you know, they, some are north, south, east, west, and some are diagonal and you can't get from here to there. And, um, and then the zoning is, is odd in, in cases. But it's one of the reasons, you, you, you know, we're, we're working on that and we're, we're imposing that on, um, on, on a, on a, on a built-out area. So tho- those kind of things don't surprise me. I guess I'm not, there may be a couple, two or three things I'm surprised or disappointed in, in the trend. But I think in a number of areas, um, I guess I'm not surprised about feeling of safety. We've always struggled with that nationally, that, but we're still much lower than the national, which says we've got work to do in that area. I'm heartened that parks and rec were similar now. We seem to have scored a little bit better. Yeah, there, there, there's some good news in there. There's some things that we clearly have to work on. I don't know that it changes my policy outlook on, on things. I guess on the government, governance side, things that we can control on a day-to-day basis, you know, things like street cleaning, street lighting, which went way up. And it should because we've put in a, a lot of, uh, street lighting. So I, you know, I, I'm not, I, I leave it to the data guys to say if it's statistically significant. I remember I was in a room one time where a guy who did advertising campaigns said, "I could probably do a statistically significant poll of a national presidential election with as few as 100 people." So it, it's, it's, it helps to have more people, but, um, you know, and I don't know that I'd want to pay for that poll either. But, uh, you know, I, I, I think this has some information for it. I think the important thing is the, is the trend for me. And, and it, and it does show us some areas where we need to do, do some work. And clearly, you know, it does pick up things like housing affordability. It did that. I mean, and we've been told this consistently. We believe, I think we all believe that housing affordability is a problem. And it showed up in this clearly. So, um, it doesn't talk about homelessness directly, I don't believe. There are no, there are no questions in that. So although it did add, it looks like some questions, some new questions came up, I guess, and, and we did okay in those. But, uh, anyway.
We'll digest and I'm sure a bit more. And we appreciate your hard work on it. I know it's, it's tough to kind of glean insights a little bit because the data just is what it is. I appreciate your efforts to try to lead us through a discussion on that. And we'll, we'll probably play with it a little bit more and it'll have some value in our strategic planning for the year as we get to it. So it'll be good. Any other questions, Mr. Branstad?
Yeah, I'm sure. I, I guess the, you know, the recommendation is talked about, modifying future surveys and things to do that. But, but, uh, are we thinking of doing this same survey again? Or are, is, or, or what, what kind of a timeline are we on to, to, to do that? Or do we want to do something else that gives us a new baseline post-pandemic and, 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 and whatever? I think, um, we should, uh, before we put money in the budget for the next biennium to do a survey, we should really decide between those two options of continue with this sequence, okay, with this survey, which is, again, again, has the value of being able to look back at, at history as well as it's getting, getting national comparisons. Or of, are we at a point where we want to reset our baseline with a, with a survey by a different, different, different vendor or in some other way to, way to do that? So I, 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 I guess, Mr. Vargas, I guess we would sort of lead to look for a staff recommendation on that question. Perhaps as a part of, of, of the budget process, if a survey is going to be included in the, asked in the next biennial budget or not. I mean, if it's not anticipated next, next biennium, then I guess maybe the question can be put off a little. But, um, that would be, uh, one, one thing going forward that I think would be helpful to us in, I don't know, in digesting this.
I would love to get, if we ever did this again, which I'm sure somebody will down, down the road, but some sort of contingent payment where we got to get, we got to get a significant response to feel like we're getting something of value, in my humble opinion. Maybe it's statistically significant from the economists who do their econometric work. I get it. But from my perspective, and I look out there, 226 people. If you tell me 500 or 1,000 people provided data, I could get into that. 226 people, it's tough for me. That's just me.
Well, you need more money to increase your universe. And so if, I mean, the universe was 2, 2,700, 2,700 people?
That's correct.
2,700 people, so 226 out of 2,700. You get anywhere close to 300 people and you're, I mean, they call that statistically significant. So if you, if you wanted to sample a larger, a larger part of the, part of the population.
Maybe a function of doing it less often, but doing a wider sampling.
Well.
From the budgetary standpoint.
From my point of view, you should do it every two years because you need to, you do your survey, you develop your action plan, you implement your action plan, and then you resurvey to see if you've moved the needle. So for example, I would love to see, um, your, your recommendations on things that we should do based on the results that we have. Maybe the top three, because that will, that will really inform our budget.
Public safety obviously is one, right? For sure.
But what about public safety? What should we, I mean, short of just saying that we're going to put more officers on the street or allocate more dollars, you know, what, what insights are we gleaning? Is it, is it walking patrols? Is it, is it presence? Is it cars? I mean, so are there, is there more information that we need in order to make an informed bu- budget choice? So, um, I, this, I think this is just the beginning.
One more to follow. I forget when we've got our council, council retreat scheduled in the fall, that we have one? Until we're right? So we can kind of dig into this a little bit further and flesh out our, our goals and see how we can tweak those as we head into the next biennium because the budget process is soon upon us.
The fall retreat is scheduled just for legislative work. So if we needed to add this to the agenda, we could do that.
Very true. Well, thank you again for all your work. It's always fun, right?
Yeah.
Interesting. What were you most surprised about?
Ah, geez. I think I was more surprised with maybe the similarities between survey years more than, you know, any racial similarities. I mean, overwhelming majority of ratings between the two survey years were, were the same. That's, that's quite surprising considering we are going through a pandemic and recession. And that was surprising, so.
Interesting, in a good way.
Yeah, yeah.
Good. All right, well, we'll take, we'll take that as a positive sign, but we'll still dig into it. So thank you again. So let's take, uh, four minutes and stretch a little bit before we get into the comp plan amendment process here. Because I think, uh, our planning manager Tiffany Spear will need to join us virtually to gear up for her 2022 comp plan amendment overview. So why don't we give ourselves about four minutes to get a cup of coffee or water? And then we'll reconvene at 9:05. Yeah, I just gotta stand up a little bit. Yeah. It's been a long day since five in the morning. Yeah.
Do you have your running?
Uh, no, today is the train or the crunch. Tomorrow's a rain group, which is always brutal after a late council meeting. So Monday, Wednesday, Friday, I got a different guy, you know? And then Thursday's studio fitness and then Tuesday and Saturday runs. Take care. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
You know, my former Marine, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, he's crazy. Okay, Ms. Spear, welcome to your Lakewood City Council Study Session.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, Mr. Mayor, excuse me, Madam Deputy Mayor and members of the council. Tiffany Spear here this evening to, as you said before the break, just overview on the 2022 comprehensive plan amendment package, which will be before you actually, next Monday night for a public hearing. I will share my screen. Excuse me. So, uh, back last fall, there was a resolution passed by the city council to set the docket list for this year to include seven potential amendments. The Planning Commission heard, uh, pieces of the docket over a number of meetings because there were several rather heavy-duty, if you will, amendments that needed more than just one meeting to review with them. So that occurred starting in January and went all the way through May. On May 18th, there was a public hearing at the Planning Commission. Two people commented and the responses were provided back to the Planning Commission to their comments before they took action on Resolution 202204, which is before you this evening. As I said, the public hearing at the council level is a week from tonight. And then the council is scheduled to potentially take action on these amendments on August 5th. It's recommended, uh, by the Planning Commission to adopt the plans, uh, the amendments as recommended. There is one item that they suggested or recommended be postponed until a future cycle. And I'll get to that in just a second. So as I said, there's seven total amendments. The first is relatively simple. The graphics you see on the screen and in your packet here relate to one parcel behind the St. Clair campus and has a, a number of parking lots on it. But the other thing of significance on it is a Gary Oak stand. And what this amendment would do is rezone that parcel from public institutional, which is the rest of the St. Clair campus, to open space and recreation. And the intent to do so is in order to protect that grove of trees against any future development. This is reflective of the master plan for the St. Clair campus. And St. Clair has no objection. They're supportive of this amendment as presented to you by Planning Commission. The second comprehensive plan amendment, I am, is broken out into five pieces. And I, if you would indulge me, I'm going to go ahead and then come back to this one last. So bear with me as I skip ahead. The third amendment is related to an update of the Housing Chapter and then related amendments to the Development Regulations Concerning Housing in Title 18A. Uh, and the council's well aware, you have had a number of conversations regarding housing pre-COVID as well as during this pandemic. Um, and at first it was just figuring out how to address changing dynamics in the housing market. But then it was also exacerbated by COVID and the, um, increasing rate of homelessness and affordable housing issues in the region, not only just in Lakewood. So this began as, uh, in response to that. But what has also happened is because it's part of this year's cycle, it ties into the start of the work the city has begun for the large 2024 periodic update. And that is the full review of the entire comprehensive plan, which occurs every, now it's going to be 10 years. Previously, it was every eight. So every single page of the comprehensive plan in theory is open for So every single page of the comprehensive plan in theory is open for amendment during that process. And so the idea here is rather than doing this piecemeal, we're trying to make sure that any amendments provided in this process to you be reflective of what needs to happen in that 2024 update. So the Planning Commission has recommended to continue this amendment until at least 23, if not to drop it right into the 24 process. Again, to make sure we're not confusing issues by doing things before we have all of the guidance and rules coming from the regional and state level regarding the 24 periodic update. Number four relates to the question of adult family homes located.
Hold on, Ms. Spear.
I'm sorry.
On the, on oh three, in a continuing and not making any changes at all within the Housing Chapter. Is staff confident that there aren't any problematic or changes to the Housing Chapter that can't wait until 2024, let's say, based on state legislation or just something that's that's ongoing? Yeah, I understand. So so I understand not doing anything major, but is is staff confident that there's, there's nothing in the plan now that is problematic that needs to be addressed this year?
Uh, yes, what we have done is made sure that the city is complying with, for instance, House Bill 1220 and the timing that it has within it for changes that are required by city governments with their planning documents and their development regulations. And also with the work that we've been doing with our sub area plans, we're actually a little bit ahead of the game on some of the things that the state is going to be requiring in 24. But yes, Mr. Brand Center, to answer your question, we have taken a look to make sure that we're not missing any need to make some amendments right now in favor of waiting for the work in 23 and 24.
So there's nothing that we need to do or that by not doing, we would not be disqualifying ourselves from some of the state funding programs that have been made contingent upon doing certain things in the housing realm?
Correct. And actually, yes, you're welcome. And just so the council is aware, we have submitted applications to two competitive grants related to housing and it looks like we'll be receiving both of those. And they both again tie into the 2024 process. So all of this is congealing, even if it wasn't anticipated to begin with, to look like 24 is the year where where any changes we need will be made.
Thank you.
Yep. So amendment number four is related to adult family homes being located in air corridors one and two in the city. And there's a lot of text on the screen and on the text as well, sorry. But if you visualize the city's layout, the eastern portion of the city just above the North Clear Zone are where these two zones are located. And they are related to the accident potential coming from flights into and out of McCord Air Force Base at North McCord Field. So historically, the city has planned to have residential units and there's about 1,830 of them in this area. Eventually be relocated, if you will, out of the area into other areas of the city because of safety concerns related to the crash risk at McCord Field. And the Clear Zone has the highest risk of crash. AC1 is closer to Clear Zone, so it's a little higher than AC2. But all three of them are considered areas where residential and other dense development and occupation by people should be avoided. And that's based on the FAA and Department of Defense guidance that's come out in a number of different. I'm sorry, not joint land use studies, but the air corridor safety plans that they both work together to develop every five years or so for all of the bases across the country. But in addition to that, there are Washington State law and multi-county planning policy language that also support the idea of A, making sure that development near a military installation, be it JBLM or another one, be compatible. So both growth within the civilian side of the fence and then operations on the military side of the fence can both continue in a safe and productive way. There are actually two sections in RCW Chapter 4330 that's talked about over the last few years at the state legislative level. Making sure again that military installations are not threatened or their operations threatened for reduction because of incompatibility of development around them. And then in Vision 2050, which was adopted last year, there was actually a new multi county planning policy adopted, which states, as you see in the middle of the screen, protecting military lands from encroachment by incompatible uses and development on adjacent land. So with all of that, the city has historically said no more residential development within the AC1 and AC2 zones. And eventually those areas, the population and once those houses become obsolete due to people moving out, the inability to maintain and improve them over time because they're considered non-conforming. They're redeveloped over time after purchase, what have you. Eventually, people are not living in that area more anymore and it is compatible development to the density and safety standards that again, the DOD and FAA recommend. However, RCW 71128140, and this is actually the subject of past litigation that the city was involved in, states that an adult family home must be considered a residential use of property. And they are permitted in all areas zone for residential or commercial purposes, including areas zone for single family dwellings. So even though on the one hand, you've got those statutes and policies listed above, and then you have this statute, the way courts have interpreted this is that the that last RCW 71128 is the one that's going to trump. And so it's going to be the city needing to comply with that. And that's what you see in the language of this amendment. So even though the city has expressed reasons for why it has legislated as it has in the past regarding residential development in these areas, this amendment actually increases the amount of residential development, meaning allowing adult family homes in both of these air corridor zones. So you'll see a few changes here. Coming back, you'll see that now under APZ1 and APZ2, which are accident potential zones, very similar to the air corridor zones, there's some technical reasons why it's called two different things in the code. But what you see there is that adult family homes are now going to be permitted. In a couple of sections, you'll see that there are exempting adult family homes from the intensity criteria or the amount of people per acre that are allowed. And in the bottom, that number two, and then the commentary at the bottom, the city is needing to comply with state law. But again, this is an area of concern and the city council is well aware of that.
She potentially disperses them out of Oak Brook, that way. That's about the best to get out of that. Mr. Brand Center. Doesn't make a lot of sense. I took your, I took your batteries away, Mike.
Yep, yep. Ms. Spear, I'm given the statutes that essentially was passed, it says that they have to be permitted in areas that are allow residential or commercial zones. Are we taking this action based on it being zone for residential use or zone for commercial use?
It's not even the zoning per se, Councilmember Brand Center. What you have here is down in the blue, if I can, I don't think I can highlight it, sorry. Case law has concluded, and this is specifically in a Lakewood case. I'm, the city attorney, I think, can help me out here if I misspeak, but what the court held was that adult family homes must be allowed as any other residential use may be allowed. So non-conforming residential uses are allowed in AC1 and AC2 right now. And as a result, adult family homes are as well. I don't know if the city attorney wants to add any more to that.
So as we have, as the change is proposed, adding adult family homes and then as permitted uses in both of the both of the zones. If someone were to build an adult family home, while the residences that are there are non-conforming uses, would a new adult family home be a conforming use?
It would not be building a new structure. It would be using an existing residential home and converting it. And I see Ms. Walker is there, so I'll, I'll be quiet.
So, so, so are we prohibiting building one?
Councilmember Brand Center, if residential homes are permitted, adult family homes are residential homes. So if residential homes are prohibited, then an adult family home as a residential home is prohibited. But they are the same thing. They are not the same to us, but under the law, they are the same thing. You can tell an adult family home, no, to the same degree you can tell a family of six, no. They're the same under the law.
Yeah, so I, so I certainly see that if someone was to convert an existing residential structure to an adult family home, that we're required to allow that, the same as we are every place else in the city that that those are. So my question is, in the format where we're saying adult family homes are permitted uses, which is what the change is, that are we allowing one to be constructed on vacant land in those areas?
To the same degree that a regular residence would be allowed. If they're not, then you would not allow it. What, what we're saying is it's a permitted use if you have an existing home that someone converts. And a typical conversion is something like a ramp to facilitate access to the doors, pole bars, things like that, changing the doors so that they're easier for people who have limited mobility, things of that sort, those sorts of changes to an existing home, those would not trigger enough of a change to the house to be a prohibited change.
So for residential uses, the code currently says they can continue as non-conforming uses.
Correct.
Okay. But then when we add a separate line, a separate place in the code for adult family homes, we're not saying that they are allowed to be done as non-conforming uses or continuing non-conforming uses the same way as residences. They're, they're actually in the same way as wanting to build a, a business. It's a permitted use. The distinction isn't there because we, we added it as a separate criteria from residential as opposed to making it a as a, as, as, as under existing uses, where, where we have alteration of modification of non, of structures and things to do that. If we had inserted the adult family home program there saying that it is allowable to convert or something into an adult family home, which sounds like our intent, it would be better to place that up under existing uses under the, and there is a section about modification of non-conforming existing uses in, in doing that. Whereas down in, by placing it as a separate residential use apart from all of the residential uses that are already there, which are there. It seems like we're opening the door for someone to take some vacant land and build one. The way it's worded.
We'll take a look at it. I mean, we hear what you're saying and we'll take a look at it.
I, I, you know, I, I think.
Correct.
You, you can't build residential, so putting it in an existing, under the existing uses section instead of under new residential uses would be clearer to our, closer to our intent. I don't think we can make this clear at all.
We hear what the council member is saying. He's simply saying what we are telling you and what that seems to be saying are different. And so what we'll do is we'll go back and look at the language.
Next.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. So a few other changes which relate to what you saw on the table. I don't think we need to spend a whole lot of time on these. One thing, though, that is added in here in order to also provide for a one-time expansion or addition to a residential use. And this is again, in the spirit of adult family homes using an existing residence, but also opening this one time, if not more than 200 square feet addition or expansion is for all the residences in the area. So this is like taking a garage and making it habitable space. So this was something that the Community Development Director, I think, based on his experience and feedback from property owners out there. If you were to A, first allow the adult family homes to come in because they're, they are the same as, then treating the existing residential uses not the same with this expansion didn't make a lot of sense. So he wanted to make sure that it was included for all of the structures. So any other questions on that amendment? If not, I'll continue.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number five is a technical almost in nature. It is simply to reflect the changes and the fact that Vision 2050 is now adopted and there's also a need to change the name of Centers of Local Importance to Centers of Municipal Importance. Getting really wonky here, but long story short, the term Centers of Local Importance must refer to a particular type of center. And in order for it to work in the city of Lakewood, we have to rename our centers to municipal importance instead. It's not anything other than there was a change to the countywide planning policies that require this. It's a verbiage technicality. Number six is updating maps to the, in the county, I'm sorry, in the comprehensive plan because the Parks Legacy Plan was adopted in 2020. And we've also need to update the urban focus area map because of the two sub areas having been adopted over the last few years. The last amendment here before I go back to Tillicum is parking and I believe that Courtney Brunel, at least she was, I think she's here tonight as well, should you have any questions on this one? But this is in response to the council taking a look at particular applications, I believe, for multifamily tax exemption approval and some of the concerns regarding parking that the council had. It also reflects discussions that were led by Ms. Brunel with the Planning Commission in March of this year. There were four questions asked of the Planning Commission that they then answered. So should there be a code amendment to require a set aside of guest parking spaces for multifamily development? Should the city require pedestrian access between offsite parking locations? Should the code be looking at differences based on a department, a multifamily development's size? Meaning so many units, you get so many extra spaces of parking or not? And then were there any other amendments that the Planning Commission wanted to recommend back to the city? And you'll see here, under the first one, there was a consensus to require guest parking for multifamily development. There was a consensus to not require pedestrian access between offsite parking locations. There is a consensus to propose amendments saying that the parking requirements would be based on the number of bedrooms in units. And then no additional changes were desired in addition to those three listed above. So with that, I don't know if you have any questions that I may be able to answer. If not, Ms. Brunel is here as well.
Well, I have a question. We just reviewed something last week where the developer proposed a completely different configuration, 55 and over, because of the restrictiveness of parking requirements based on a prior. because of the restrictiveness of parking requirements based on a prior potential multifamily use, right? And I have heard in the central business district that some parcels are constrained on some of the multi, excuse me, some of the mixed-use opportunities because of parking. Do we want to make that even worse by enhancing the requirements for parking for guests? You know, for example, if you had a mixed-use project, and you've got the requirements for parking for commercial for that lower first floor, and then you also have requirements for parking per bedroom for the upper stories if you had a multifamily or mixed-use project. And then if you add guest parking on top of that, are we going to preclude the development we want to seek in the town center?
I would turn that over to Ms. Brunel.
Thank you, Tiffany. Mr. Mayor, the recommendation is actually, does not include any modifications to 18B, so which would be the downtown subarea plan. These were, the initial idea behind these came from the total townhomes multifamily tax exemption, which you may recall you forward last year, where all of the parking spaces provided were garaged parking spaces. And it was, there was a concern that that wouldn't be able to accommodate for guest parking. So in those instances, what we, what the council decided to do to move forward would require that a certain number of the parking stalls be unreserved. What this amendment does is require that per code. And so now in the future, we would not be requiring additional parking spaces. Rather, we would require that a portion of the parking spaces that are already required per code be ungaraged or uncovered or unreserved for guest parking.
Okay, great. As long as we're just not increasing the burden is what I'm hoping to avoid.
So if there's no other questions on parking, I will head back to the Tillicum amendment, which is the most complicated, but just checking if there's anything else from Ms. Brunel. Doesn't sound like it, so back we go. All right. So amendment number two is not a full-blown rewrite, but simply a status review of the 2011 Tillicum Neighborhood Plan, which was actually adopted as a subarea plan by the city. It did not have development regulations adopted in conjunction with it, and it did not have a planned action ordinance adopted with it. However, it is considered under state structure, state code, to be a subarea plan for the city. And then limit, related to that, the amendment also included a review of the Tillicum Center of Local Importance, its boundaries, and also some of the zoning within that. This was, the whole amendment is actually an amalgam of two or three different ones. There were two private rezones requested in Tillicum. And then there was a recognition that that 2011 neighborhood plan, being 10 years old, it was due to be read and refreshed per comprehensive plan policy. So that turned into this larger amendment that you see before you this evening. There's five subparts. First is proposed addendum language to the neighborhood plan itself. Secondly is recommended rezones of parcels within Tillicum. Third is that discussion about Center of Local Importance and its boundary. Fourth is just technical, not technical, but text amendments to the comprehensive plan, reflecting the updates to the neighborhood plan and also the Tillicum area boundaries as suggested. And then there are a few development code text amendments as well. The other thing that the Planning Commission added in its recommendation to you in their resolution is that Tillicum does get reviewed as part of the 2024 periodic update. Because again, the addendum that you'll see as part of this amendment is not a rewrite of the plan. It is simply a review of the status of its implementation actions. So the language itself in summary says it's 11 years old. It's per comprehensive plan policy to review this on a periodic basis. And then as you see here in the center, there were 68 action items identified in the 2011 neighborhood plan. As of now, as of 2022, 12 are complete, 26 are ongoing, and then 30 are not done. And there's a variety of reasons why. And then there were also 12 longer-term strategies, which didn't have a priority ranking or a timeframe initially assigned to them that were also reviewed. And then just a recognition that what was not talked about within the Tillicum plan at the time, because it didn't exist yet, was the city's rental housing safety program, which is something that has been improving quality of housing in Tillicum since this plan was adopted. So let's see if there's anything else I need to say here. The package in front of you includes a description and chart of all of the items that are either done or ongoing. One of the major focuses, of course, at the time when this was written was bringing sewer to Tillicum. And that has been done to a large degree. However, as the council, I think, knows, right now with ARPA dollars, the city is seeking some funding support from Pierce County's ARPA dollars to continue to expand sewer in Tillicum. So it's not a completely done deal, but quite a bit has been done there. Millions of dollars has been spent. The second piece to this amendment is the rezon recommendation from the Planning Commission. And there's about. Sure.
Sorry, Ms. Brunel, the question.
Given the explanation about sewers in the document that's before us, it has its 2022 status, has done rather than ongoing, but your comments seem to indicate ongoing. So what really is the difference between done and ongoing? Just document.
From what I understand, this predates my time at the city. But from what I understand, the reason it was labeled done is because the identification of the expansion in the neighborhood plan, as it was discussed in there, is complete. But there are additional now expansions being talked about as the ARPA funds have become available to either speed up or add to the extension possibilities within the neighborhood. So what was specifically talked about in 2011 is complete, but there's been other things since that are now identified for potential funding with ARPA.
An expanded plan would be what would be done in 2024?
I would have to go back and look at what Public Works is putting together as their application to the county. It's actually a little bit of this related to Boat Street, which is where Habitat for Humanity is doing some of its work with new development. But I think there's another part of Tillicum that would also see extension.
All right, thank you.
So the second piece to this amendment does include rezoning a number of parcels. And I hope this is visible to you there. But the green outlined parcel here, where my cursor is, that is where Bill's Boathouse was previously located. As you know, it was, it burned down unfortunately in the last couple of months. And we're not quite sure what the family or the property owners are going to do, but they are talking to the city about redevelopment ideas there. But this proposal would not change the zoning on that parcel. The other things that would not change would be these ones that are outlined in orange. So off to the northeast of Bill's Boathouse, those would remain residential three. And then to the southwest, with one parcel in between them, and then Wadsworth Street as well, this group of parcels would also remain R3. Where you would see the change is this long parcel, which actually might be subdivided at this point, would change to mixed residential two. And then southeast of Bill's Boathouse, that area bounded by Silcox Drive, West Thorn Lane, and Bill's Boathouse parcel would change again to MR2. And then there would be where you see the Habitat for Humanity Boat Street project being built. Many of these parcels have already been rezoned. And so this is finishing off the rezone of that whole block. The actual request from Habitat for Humanity this cycle originally was this parcel here where my cursor is. So to make this geographically make more sense with the road pattern and the partial pattern, it's suggested and recommended by Planning Commission that this whole block also be rezoned MR2. The third piece is looking at the boundaries of the Tillicum Center of Local Importance. On your left is the current boundaries. And so you'll see it's along Union, Foreign Lane. And then on the south, southwest side, it's Berkeley coming right down here toward the interchange. But this is Washington Avenue, which is the northern boundary there. On the right, you'll see what's proposed for the new boundary. It expands to include some of the areas we were just talking about with the rezone. So it would come further southwest again with the Center of Local Importance. And then you would also have it jogged down to Portland rather than Washington. So there's more properties here, which are in line with the new interchange at Berkeley coming into that Center of Local Importance. The fourth item would be updating text in the comprehensive plan just to state things that have been completed through implementation of the neighborhood plan since 2011. And these include the areas titled Tillicum, titled Isolated Areas, another section regarding Tillicum, and then Sanitary Sewer. And then the fifth part is establishing in 188140 reference to this subarea plan. Just a pretty simple idea of saying we have downtown and Lakewood Station subareas. We also have Tillicum, and there may be a future code amendment. We're not sure at this point. So those are the five pieces to the second amendment, all of which relate to Tillicum. So unless there's any other questions, one more time, the process here is to get through this discussion this evening. If there's any requests or changes you may have, next Monday night is the public hearing. And then August 5th is the date at this point for council to take action on the 22 amendment package.
Any questions? It's a lot of information.
Yeah.
Mr. Branstad.
Was there any discussion about library services in Tillicum by the Planning Commission or impacted by this? I know that there is, I don't, I don't recall to the extent that libraries were mentioned in the 2011 plan. You know, other than maybe that there was one, that, you know, the city has a piece of property that we acquired that had some intent for that to be not sure what it is now, but the intent of the city was for it to eventually be some kind of public institutional use. But is that not, is that, is that something that's, would be looked at in 2024? Or was it even a consideration? Because it looks like that property is now going to be within the Center of Local Importance.
The extent of the conversation was simply to verify and affirm that the 2011 plan said this is going to be a Tillicum library location, and it would continue to be so. Whether it continues at the same location and size, or whether it gets expanded, there would continue to be a library in Tillicum. And this did get through the Planning Commission prior to the discussion that is currently ongoing regarding the main branch and its fate.
Okay, but was there any discussion about a particular piece of property that the city acquired about whether its zoning should change to public institutional?
No, there was not.
That would be a future year action. Okay, thank you.
Just on that particular topic on pages, I'm looking at 211 and 212, there is a reference to Green Streets as serving the school and the library, right? Maple Street. Well, I know, but that's why they got to get it either cleaned up or whatever, because it's referencing as part of Maple Street improvements there, right? Serving the library and the school. Is that something we need to change or update, or just leave alone?
Well, the intention, Mr. Mayor, this time around was simply to look at the implementation plan and the items that were included on that and provide an update as to their status. Due to resources, time, funding, staffing, we didn't go any further with the rewrite or update. And so the intent is to have that happen at the future periodic update.
Down the road, okay, great. Any other questions on that? Does that wrap it up then, pretty much?
That does, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Ms. Moss, did you have any questions? No, no, okay. Yeah, so I guess the hearing would be at the next council meeting, because it looks as if we've got the public hearing on the 2022 comprehensive plan amendments set for July 18. And then this would come back potentially before the council on the next regularly scheduled council meeting for adoption.
Correct. So if you wanted a second study session based on your own intent or based on public hearing comments, that can be done prior to August 5th.
We'll know more after we hear the comments on the 18th.
Correct.
Very good. Well, thank you very much. I believe that is the last item for discussion tonight during our study session. Before we go to reports by the city manager and council comments, we do potentially have an executive session that I had scheduled. But given the fact that we have two council members who would be significantly involved in that, that are not present tonight, would I gain a lot of angst if we canceled the executive session and adjourned at the end of council comments tonight? I know that would make you all sad, but I think, given the July 18 agenda, I think that'll be a quicker evening, and we might be fresher to accomplish what we need to accomplish in our executive session. So anyway, I just thought I'd throw that out there. It looks like I'm okay with that. All right, Ms. Kraus, you're up.
Well, Mayor, given the microphone issues and the lack of microphones, I'll just give my report up here. And my report is more fun. It's all about summer and parks events. So July 12th, July 19th, July 26th, and August 9th, we have summer nights at the Pavilion between 6:30 and 8:00 p.m. On August 2nd, as Mayor noted last week, we have National Night Out at various locations. August 13th, on Saturday, we have the Saturday Street Festival Jazz Nights and Car Show. And then again on August 16th, summer nights at the Pavilion. And that concludes my update.
You're only going to leave us with positive things?
It's all positive. It's summer.
Well, lucky you. Any questions of our acting city manager on her positive report? Well, we'll really be swinging unless that graffiti comes down at the Pavilion. We've got it, okay. If there are no questions of Ms. Kraus, then we'll go to council comments. And Ms. Farmer, you're first.
It came on, I bet. Friday, July 1st, we had the monthly SHAPE South Sound Housing Affordability Partners Meeting, and they unveiled a brand-new website, and I will send the link around. And it's very well done and provides a little bit more history than the site had before. And so there's some really good information there. And there are some other updates that I will be emailing you as well. And that's about all I had.
Thank you very much, Mr. Branstad. Mr. Boki. Deputy Mayor Moss, I wouldn't forget you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did attend the 62nd Leadership Social Thursday night. It was a great event. They're getting back into the swing of things. It was a larger crowd. And it was great. It was good to see some new faces and see that they are excited about how the city is involved with the military. That's something that's ongoing. They praise this city a lot. That's something that's ongoing. They praise this city a lot because of our love for the military. So just wanted to share that. And tonight I attended the night, the school board meeting. And one of the things that I didn't clarify enough on, if I could get a message to Superintendent Banner. They asked about how, how, how did the city go about finding lifeguards for the, for the lakes? And they suggested looking at the Y. And then when I left the meeting, I talked to one of the police officers, and they said that the Y trains there. And I did not know that at the time. So if we could get that information to them, that would be great. They were excited about all the things that are coming down the pipe because my report was like, city manager who was real positive. They liked that. There was a couple of questions asked about why the city wasn't able to do the lifeguard thing. But it was, I could, I could explain that. It was just that piece that I was missing. So if we can get that to them, that would be good. And that's all I have.
Well, thank you very much. Just a couple of comments here. On Friday, I had a check in with local mayors and county folks with Congresswoman Strickland. She does a wonderful job of reaching out with not only just her staff, but she loves to hear from all of us. And any comments we have, we present to her, and she's been very gracious about continuing support for South Tacoma Way Project. Understands the desire for us from a federal legislative party to get the medium sized cities set asides on federal infrastructure dollars. So we talked a little bit about that. And generally, the issues with what other communities, as well as our own, have seen with increasing crime over the course of the last couple of years. So she's well aware of the concerns and possibly the need for some assistance, not just on the policing side, but also on the social justice side and trying to get at some of the root causes of what may be prompting some of the criminal activity. So she's, I think, working hard to address some of those issues, but that was a good meeting on Friday. That was followed by a rotary meeting in which Alan Billingsley, one of our Parks and Rec Advisory Board members, was the presenter. And he did an incredible program on the game farm off Phillips Road and all the work that Clover Park Rotary is really promulgating, as well as Rotary, Clove Lakewood has participated in. And the amazing amenities out there and how much more used the trail system. Well, how much more people are using the trail system, I should say, now that it's cleaned up and it's more accessible from an ADA standpoint. And there was an interesting conversation. Part of it really is run by this, it's all owned by the state. Part of it's really run by the state because of the hatchery and there's some special species work that's being done. But it does raise kind of the question like we do with Fort Stolicon Park. Is there a portion of that that should be, could be turned over to the city down the road? Don't know. But anyway, Billingsley talked about it, that that might be a subject for P R A V down the road, but really good program. And if you have a chance to get out there and see it and the improvements they've made, it's apparently, you know, quite nice. Of course, across the street sidewalks are going in. I don't know if you've received calls or emails from folks that are a little bit cranky about, yeah, that. And it's, I drove out there and looked at it. I think they're doing the best they can to manage the work. But I think it'll be nice, and there is method to the madness because it connects, you know, the Hutloch sidewalks all the way down for kids in those neighborhoods. And I think it'll be a good project, but more to follow. Mr. Brans, Senator.
Yeah, I, I actually talked to a couple of people that sent me those emails. And, and they were not aware that, that none of the trees, for instance, that were being removed were, were on private property. We didn't do any right of way acquisitions for that project. I mean, it was similar to when we put the sidewalks in along Onyx. There were people who had made improvements in the right of way to, for landscaping their yards, but that was the situation and when here, here too. And this was not an idea that was just appeared out of nowhere. It was, had always been on the sidewalk plan to actually have that whole loop from Onyx all the way around and eventually then down Zircon and around and making, making, making a truly pedestrian way to do that. And these are the, some of the same folks who were in the, and I don't want street lights in my neighborhood. Folks to be able to go and do that. So I, I think those sidewalks, like sidewalks that we put in everywhere else, that even though people didn't notice people walking there before, they'll notice people using them now. I think it goes on and on.
I think I wrote a response and courtesy copied all of you to that gentleman who had the issue. I think I sent an email to all of you about that. And just to respond, I think I sent it to you as well, just a response to the gentleman. So explain maybe the same situations. Yeah, so, but you know, progress is progress. It's always mucky until it's done. And when it's done, then people enjoy it better. And then later that evening on Saturday, Deputy Mayor Moss and I attended a function for the, the Lakewood Community Foundation. Really well attended, and the purpose of that was just to thank folks who had donated to that. And that entity, five oh one C three, was started by, again, Clover Park Rotary and Lakewood Rotary when they found the need to have an endowment established for the benefit of the Lakewood community. And it's really quite heartwarming. And you think they started very small with a couple of folks, and now that endowment's grown to over one point four million. And the goal obviously is to expand it. And again, it's for the benefit of people in Lakewood and needy projects. So there'll be more information to follow on that, you know, down the road, but I encourage them to think big. And, you know, there's no reason why we can't work on building that through private, you know, bequests to a ten million dollar foundation in the next few years. So all for the benefit of this community. And it's just heartwarming to see so many people, you know, that just give so much and continue to invest in the community. It's really, really good stuff. So. Well, that's all I have unless anyone has any other alibis for the good of the order. And as indicated, we will not recess into executive session tonight. We'll defer to the July eighteen regular session. So we'll have an executive session on that meeting date instead. So we are adjourned. Thank you.